All right, we welcome you here tonight to our school board meeting. We'll start out with a pledge of allegiance and a prayer.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jesus, we love you. We give you thanks today for your many wonderful blessings and many wonderful things that you've done in our lives and our community. Tonight, Father, we just ask that you would be here in a special way to lead us and guide us, Lord. Give us some instruction on how to impact our community and the children that we serve and the staff, Lord, in the best way that we possibly can to make the best decisions that would just let you be glorified in all that we do. Father, we pray this in your name, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Yeah. That's over. All right, future board meetings. Our next one's July night. Here July twenty-third and July, or August thirteenth, all here at the administration building. The revisions to the agenda, I think there were maybe a couple under HR. Go to public recognition.
Actually, there's nothing submitted, and I have some things during my superintendent report, so I guess I'll just go ahead and yield to the next title.
So we have new school recognition, no presentations unless...
No presentation.
Public comment. All right. Under agenda items. Approval of our minutes, our last meeting. Do you have a motion of second to that?
Move.
Got a motion of second to approve our last regular meeting. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Financial reports, claims. Any questions or comments on the claims? Now, get a motion of second.
Move to accept.
Second. All right. Got a motion of second for claims. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Payroll.
Just, I think I said this before. These next few payrolls are going to be a little higher because they'll reflect the end of the year. Like coaching stipends and some other stipends that happen through the ECA contracts.
Any questions on payroll? Got your motion of second. Prove the payroll.
I'm going to accept payroll.
Motion of second. All those in favor, prove the payroll. Say aye. Any opposed? Financial summary.
Since we only had one, or we only have one this month, I shared with you the end of the month cash balance reports for all the funds as well as the cash flow for education and operation fund. Nothing out of the ordinary. Did update some numbers on cash flow that just represents updated numbers related to some expenses coming up such as the demolition project that we're going to hopefully approve today, those types of things. So updated some of those numbers for the cash flow, just to give us a better picture where we're at and where we're headed.
That's what you're yelling.
Yep. But nothing out of the ordinary, what we've already been talking. We just, like I said, the really only updates were just more accurate number reflections of some of those costs. We'll have some big expenses this month. One will be like our rental agreement with White. I think that was on this, that claim.
Yeah, we saw it here.
Yep. And then our debt service. Obviously, we start making, we have our debt payments at the end of June and end of December, so those payments come out of our books as well at that point in time. We've not received our tax payments yet. Those should be coming the next week or so, which is what we use, obviously, to pay those payments.
All right, any questions on? Our finances? All right. All right, our personnel. Up here as well. We've got one resignation. Diane White, bus aide, and that's effective immediately. employment. Tracy Kennedy, summer secretary at Northfield for the summer schedule. Amanda Watson, summer secretary at Southwood. With this summer schedule and all these things going on there. Michaela Buffal, temporary second grade teacher at Southwood Elementary to start the next beginning of school year. And Brittany Kinsel. All right, Kinsel. The English teacher at Southwood High School, effective their beginning of school year. And a few transfers. Abby Siders transferring from pre-K third to pre-K fourth, paraprofessional at Southwood Elementary, effective at beginning of school year. Brandon Collins transferring from RISE room to pre-K third, paraprofessional at Southwood Elementary. That's the beginning of school year. And Megan Davis transferring from temporary paraprofessional, pre-K third to paraprofessional to RISE room in Southwood Elementary, effective at beginning of school year. Got a motion of second? Prove those.
Tell me.
Second. Got a motion of second to approve our human resources personnel report. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Anything there? Reports. Who, Matt?
I will just tell you though on Hartland, if I can just, we did have a meeting. And Matt has been the president of the Board of Directors, Hartland Personnel was there. Also, a few of the superintents were there. They did bring in the architect and also the other people that are involved with the roof. So that project is moving forward. And again, we're looking at the 2025 summer, looking at some other different situations, possibly ordering the materials in this year to make it a little more cost effective if they feel like it's going to be a little less than next year. Would not have to have payment though. I know, I haven't mentioned that to him yet, but would not be payment until next year. So the budget would already be there. And he is looking at adding that information to the budget for 2025. So we're still in progression with that. Matt probably shared that when he was here.
So we don't have any estimates of dollar amounts or anything?
Not yet, no. None of the bids have come in or anything like that. That hasn't happened yet, but they're doing all the drawings and specs and different things like that, so.
And we did have a budget meeting about, not that necessarily, but just what their budget looks for for next year. So I'll take that along with some of these estimate numbers and put that into our budget. So you'll probably see a larger increase in budget related to Hartland because of those expenses.
And part of what Mr. McWhort was doing this year, he's doing a little bit more a worst case scenario, it's been done differently in the past. And so that budget hopefully is larger than what it's going to be needed. But right now, that's how we look at that, so.
So Hartland has a capital projects piece to their budget thing?
They always have, but it's been very small, so.
Certainly not to do with roof.
Yeah. So the budget, I'll have to incorporate that into our 2025 budget as far as that potential cost for the roof along with what we normally budgeted as far as, as far as the.
I didn't know if there was any funds in there that could be applied towards the roof project.
There are funds.
There are some dollars that could be, but I don't know that if they'll apply it to the roof or some of these other additional projects that need to be done.
There's still discussion about what to do for that or with that.
I think they said it was around $200,000.
So where will you draw that out of? Like you said, that would be that much more additional. Where will that come from out of our source?
So right now, our, forget what we call it, but the payments that we make directly to Hartland, those come out of our education fund.
That's what you do with those too?
Yes, and then any of the like capital projects, like there's a capital project, things that they budgeted in, bus replacement that they budgeted, that all comes out of operations. So there'll be, there won't be that much change in the education except for just the basic increases. But that operations one is where you'll see the larger budget increase because of the roof project.
All right, superintendent.
Yeah, just a few things. First of all, many of you were at commencement and just want to celebrate that again. That was a great day with all three of them. A lot of people, as you noticed, a lot of people were there. A lot of new things going on, large crowds. And our recommendation will do, continue to do next year. We are looking at possibly talking with the admin team principals about making a few slight changes as far as timing goes for the times that we start, especially at the end, because we do have people that come from long distances. But we'll talk about that later. And we'll talk about that along with our calendar, our school calendar. So the school calendar is not really changing at all, but right now we have the times listed. And so if we change that, we'll change the calendar. And also, we're going to take some verbiage off of the calendar because, because of the ten. Another best way is add that to the, the ten oh three. The ten oh three flexibility waiver, you know, that was approved. So that language is going to be taken off, so it's not confusing for people. And we will not have makeup days that we actually put on the calendar. So we'll, we'll talk about that later after we decide for sure on graduation and making that accurate on our calendar. Also, Lions in Action, just got, Mrs. Moore just sent a couple of pictures. They're out west right now, and so it's just great that they're out there. We've had a lot of great field trips. You know, we've had our seniors go different places and our junior high kids going to Washington D.C. And now the Lions in Action three are out west, so that's a celebration. This wasn't put on for Northfield, but I thought I should share this. You know, the last piece of athletics for the year, the Northfield golf. This was the third consecutive year that they won the TRC, so congratulations to them. Easton Shaw was a medalist at the sectional, which is pretty awesome. And then he and Tyson Bear moved on to regional. So I just want to mention, that's pretty much finalizes our athletics for the 23-24 school year. And we will soon be moving to 24-25. I think that might be somebody early, early. It's really open. They just pull the door, but they.
Something I've done, I heard itself.
That's going to be leaning for a little bit too. Probably shut it down, so. Yeah, it's pretty neat too, when you have it, so it actually comes to us too. And we can actually talk and things like that.
So that's the new security system?
Yes. So that's all I have.
Okay. All right, yeah, I would agree that everybody, I had a lot of good responses about superintents being there in town. So two years in a row.
They ever just asked why we didn't start that early?
They what?
They asked why we didn't start doing that earlier.
Oh, okay.
I said, yeah, I'm talking to them. Well, when I was a principal back in 2011, 12, I was interested in doing that, but it didn't get done. Wasn't there long enough, so.
All right. Well, Mr. Drake, he left us. I don't know if he had anything to share or not.
He opened the door for somebody.
He shared.
I'm just going to take a very personal.
Hey, you're up.
You're up.
I don't know if you're.
I don't know if you had anything or not, but.
Well, I just want to point out the professional development list is there on Word packet. And so we have, you might have heard about the reading endorsement that teachers are supposed to get at the elementary. We have several teachers doing that. And we have several teachers doing some AP training. And so there's even ones that didn't quite make the list. So just always working, seems like school's out, but really people are still doing stuff to help with that.
Excellent. All right, new business. Got a recommendation to approve the demolition bids there at Northville High School.
Yeah, so we put out the bids to work on the demolition of the Ag area back in Northfield along with creating some spaces for maybe drop off deliveries as well as changing of traffic flow pattern as we get into this project so that we can have those things established for the start of next school year. We had two bid, two bids, one from Star Excavating and one from G and G Holling. And Star Excavating is the bidder that we would approve at $487,990. G and G Holling was at $615,779.88. Along with that work, there is work that Ydan will provide as far as also getting the property ready for construction. And so in total, that was the contract amount. Again, this is kind of all a new process for us as well with using the CMC. So they own the contract, so they would be the one that would be paying Star Excavating and then billing us for those payments as well as their cost for that part of the project.
So it's costing us what's in the red square?
At most, because there's allowances in there. For some of that work that may or may not be used. Most of it will be used, but it may not be used at that whole amount because there will need to be electrical and the camp that just connects inside the work.
Yeah, I don't know, that's all I had. Do we know, like on somebody's number, obviously, you know, it'd be nice to have like the original bids and all that, our original estimates. Do we remember if they had an estimate for demolition?
That's all in that booklet. Yeah, because I called them and asked them these questions. And so we referred and went back to that booklet that we looked at.
How close are we to that?
But these are the numbers that they used for that.
Especially like the allowances, I think that's what.
Yeah.
I just was curious about the demolition works like Star came in, if we were over.
Oh, no, in relation to that. I didn't, I didn't look at that per se to see how.
Starting from the very beginning, if we're starting over or if we're starting under, you know, so that's why.
I was thinking about Shark Creek itself is 650.
If this isn't Shark Creek.
I know. This is unknown.
So it's going to be a, that's, that's what I was just wondering, maybe I can see those numbers.
I think it's in that booklet, but I don't know if it's broken up by, by different parts.
Yeah, when we first saw this, we had some questions, and that's why we set up a meeting just to fill in conferences and make sure we understood it too, so.
All right, any other questions on that recommendation?
I'm going to approve, Scott.
Got a motion of second to approve the demolition bid at Star Excavating. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Recommendation to approve our teacher evaluation plan.
So I want to scroll all the way to the last page just to say that the state, one thing that they did do in legislation is that they deregulated some of these things that we're doing. And so we actually looked at it ourselves. And so we're kind of deregulating what they have allowed us to do. But we are supposed to post this on the IDOE website, so I do want you to approve it. And so now, those are some things that really, I put in the plan only to say that these were changes from 2023, the legislation. But our main change is really just frequency of evaluations. I can tell you that when I first came here to MSD, we were kind of on a goal situation where a teacher, staff member would do a goal, and then basically we would look at that goal. That's how it was evaluated. And then the rise came in, a modified rise came in, and this is maybe the second modified, modified rise. And so it's frequency of doing the evaluation. So it's not really that much different. We still have teachers that will be evaluated on what we call a long. And then the administrator will have to do a post conference. And then there are shorts that are also done. And of course, if there's any need to do additional evaluations or observations, that can be done too. So there's really not any changes in that. It's just the frequency is a little less than what it's been in the past. So many things that principals do, they do know their teachers real well. If they need to observe or evaluate teachers more frequently, they can do that. But this just gives the minimum of what needs to be done. So really not too much different. We still have to have, one thing by the law, we still have to be able to label everyone as either highly effective, effective, needs improvement, or ineffective. And so that has not changed. And that's about the only thing that they said that we have to do other than also posting our plan on the IDOE website. So do we have any questions?
So a teacher gets evaluated twice a year now?
Yes, sir, twice a year. Right. And a new one would actually still do the full. So our new teachers, what, they're new to MSD. They would have three longs, what we call them, and two shorts. Yes.
Any questions on that? Get a motion of second to approve this plan.
I'll sign that.
Got a motion of second to approve the teacher evaluation plan for 2024. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, second reading. Vote with a bridge and vote.
Yep. No changes on there. Mrs. Boone was here last meeting, and I told all of them they did not have to come back as I could answer questions. But the ones that were highlighted on your packet or on the screen actually is her whole, it's not that long, but everything's on there. And so she continues to try to make this very relevant and making sure that the students are doing what they're do, are supposed to be doing. And so that's some of the language that was put in there. So we'll do this one at a time? I think we'll just do all three at the same time. So we will move on then to the elementary. There were no changes there. And you received everything, but on the screen I did put just the changes that Mrs. Moore put here for all the elementary. And then for the high school, I will let Mr. Drake start out with because we did make a change, actually an addition. It's not a huge change, but it helps out with some language with being up to date in modern society.
Life used to be so simple, didn't it?
Yes.
Used to be so simple. So it's, it would get so long when we start trying to really define things. And once you make one specific, you come up with an exception, you kind of, like, it just gets too much. And so we like to kind of leave some interpretation. So you can see there it says engaging in academic dishonesty, including cheating, plagiarizing, you know, you can read that. Notice what we don't do. We don't define cheating. You know, we don't say, hey, if somebody slips you a piece of paper with the answer, or if we catch you looking over at somebody's shoulder. Like, if we were to add to all of the caveats, that would be like a, it would be like an encyclopedia of ways to cheat. Same thing with plagiarizing. Some English teachers will say, well, it has to be 90% your words, some are 80%. Some are, well, it's okay if you make sure you give the source. And so rather than do that, we've tried to keep it relatively open to give flexibility for different groups of people. However, with the new world, artificial intelligence is really kind of making a splash. And so you guys use artificial intelligence, I don't know if you're aware of it, like when your phone autocorrects, when it gives you a suggestive word. And so finding a way to define how that is academic dishonesty is tricky. And so we worked with students, we ran this by teachers and principals, the discussions. Mike ran it by the superintendent team, the students there. And so this was what we felt like was a good umbrella for all of our teachers to move on. And then this leaves some flexibility for an English teacher to say, okay, you know, in my classroom, this is what cheating is, whereas in math class or in sci, like, maybe we have, I should say that, we have artificial intelligence and math programs. We've had those for several years. And so you can, on your phone, download an app, take a picture of any kind of math problem, and it will solve it for you. We've had that for years, probably at least four years. Actually, since we were principals, we've had that. And I just saw Apple released a video today. Their new iOS system will create an app on the iPad that if I handwrite a formula or a problem and I just write equals, it will handwrite the solution. And I can go in and then I can divide it by two, and then it will update the solution. And so we're treading unknown waters with that. And so I'm sorry I didn't send it to you earlier. We had talked about it for a while, so I guess I just assumed some of that's with it. But that's where we, what we came up with. You'll notice what we're not saying. It's important to say, we're not saying they can't use it, right? There will be a time that it's going to be acceptable. AI is really good for brainstorming, for helping you come up with the first rough draft. It's really good for grammar. And so that's going to be up to each teacher to decide either on the classroom or on specific assignment. So that's it in a big nutshell. Are any questions about that?
So predominantly means 50% or greater.
That's, that's how I would interpret it, yes. And having a lawyer here, I feel like we have some good variables about, whatever you want. There you go, there you go. And that's how we want it, because like I said, some English teachers will say it needs to be 80%, right? And so we wanted to leave some flexibility with that.
We had, just to share a little bit more too, with the superintendent advisory team, I brought this to them. And the predominantly was really discussed a lot. And some of them just said it should be, requires that submitted products be all of the students' own work. Well, the situation, just like Mr. Drake said, was that AI can, there's going to be some, some good uses for that. So it was interesting that they were trying, they were being harder on themselves and not even saying, because we asked, you know, what is predominantly? Is it 50%? Is it 80%? It's a 9%. So it's just interesting what students understand and think and how they interpret different things too, so.
And we're kind of redefining plagiarism because everything that AI creates right now would be considered public, common information. And so there is no law against taking public information and using it because it's not attributed to anybody. And ChatGPT or Apple and Bing or whatever, they are not people. And so they can't create something. And so how do you?
Rationalizing this?
Probably just stop right there.
Having a lawyer here really helps me a lot feel confidently because this is going to be a huge, I mean, the US government's trying to figure this out with patents and copyrights and movie stars and voices, and so, so, yeah.
If I was here, I'd use the AR, the AI to.
Yeah, hey, don't use the AR. No, no, Kevin, that's a whole other conversation.
I would use that to develop the, the structure. And then I would be interjecting myself in between all that, and then you could pick up this quite a lot, so. That's how my mind, my words do.
Yeah. Give you the brain, brain, you know, brainstorm. Kind of get you.
The structure.
And maybe we could, I mean, I could share where we're at with that. Just so you guys know, we've been doing a lot as a staff, our admin team and the teachers. We've led meetings, Brian Miller and I have led monthly meetings at Northfield and Southwood, mostly with the older grades. Almost all the AI tools that are out there that are public are 13. Almost all the AI tools that are out there that are public are 13-year-olds and older. Now, does that mean 10-year-olds aren't lying and giving on that? No, but for a school system, then we are trying to maintain that 13-year-old. And so we actually, we, we met with those teachers all last year, and this year we're creating a fellowship. So we're going to help give them some money to find some tools that they think will help them. I mean, there are AI tools that will grade essays and give you feedback, and they do it in seconds. I actually use that with some of my AP US stuff, it was free. I don't use that for a grade, but to give a kid feedback, rather than having to wait a week or two weeks for me to grade all those papers. It'll be crazy to see how this balances out in the end. But we are, we are exploring that here. We have probably eight teachers signed up to explore how they're going to use it in their classroom. So yeah. And, and we have just graduated, so this fall, I expect we're going to see another big leap. Mr. Keith, I'd rather him in Chicago to hear something from Apple. And I imagine they'll share a lot about AI when we get to hear the presentation, so. So I guess to go back to this, I don't want to define every level of cheating, every level of plagiarizing, but AI is so new and so uncomfortable that we at least wanted to put something out there for teachers and students to kind of understand that we expect you to do your work and not turn into AI work.
And how, how you're going to regulate, that's going to be next to impossible. Because I mean, I, I know Alex was at Purdue and kids that would normally be failing are getting A's because they can access this stuff and there's no way for, to regulate that. And so it does concern me a little bit that the kids are not going to get what we got.
Absolutely.
The critical thinking, the, you know, the brainstorming, they're not going to expand, they're not going to get that because it just doesn't form. So it's, it does, but I guess there's not much we can do about it, but it's just, that's what I fear.
Yeah, we are.
Getting through school and getting down to like, what did I, what did that just learn?
We are creating some tips and guidelines for teachers. Of course, colleges are the first ones, and so they've had to wrestle with this a lot. Some tips for teachers would be, you can ask kids to write stuff early, so you hear their voice, what they sound like. And then when they write something, you try to listen for that voice. Yeah, yeah, have them write it in class. And so actually, I had a student do that. And you can, it's very obvious when a high school student uses this and they don't really, you can trick it for sure, but this student didn't do all the extra steps. Have them handwrite the actual assignment. If you're going to grade something, it's created in class, so you can try to be sure of that. But you're exactly right, like I would wonder how many lawyers are, sorry, you're just sitting next to me, and so this is.
I don't know, can't pick brothers.
It's just everywhere, and so where that plays out.
Your best.
Mr. Patrignio, may we forego the second reading of, this is the second reading, but we added this. So can they go ahead and vote on this, though?
We, what was different?
This wasn't on there.
This was not on there.
What we just discussed, the AI part, that green in the middle right there was not on there. So I know in the past, there have been others who have, they're going on the second reading, but because this was the second reading, but we added something.
I, I think that because everyone, anyone who was interested had noticed that there would be a second reading, this is not really a substantive change.
I mean, if it's fine with these guys too, I mean, they'll have to approve it right now, but thank you.
All right, you guys have any questions on the, on these handbooks?
Feel like Kevin's still thinking through some stuff in the way.
I, this is just a personal thing. AI is getting way overused and getting way too much credit now. It's just the evolution of programming.
It takes away. Who knows?
It's still just a wonder is evil.
Yeah.
Emoting their closed circuit.
All right.
To approve Scott, all three.
Okay.
I'll start with them.
Got a motion, second, to approve the bridge, elementaries and the high school handbooks for 24, 25. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, all three of those passed. Any unfinished business? Don't go over anything? Word policy, public comment? Any items from board members? All right, nothing else, we adjourn.